I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, I want to make sure that everybody has signed in. Uh, there's a tablet there, uh, there next to the set. Uh, if you haven't signed in, you can sign in as you please. You just need to make sure we give you all the rest. All right, uh, next we have roll call, please.
Hunter.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Reed. Alderman. Walden.
Here.
Reed is out.
All right, yeah, next we have the motion to approve the minutes of the April second twenty twenty-five council meeting. We have a motion to approve that, please. You have a second? Right, any discussion? It's an eight minute roll call, please.
Hunter.
Here.
Nelson. Porter. Sullivan. Walden.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, next we have a motion to approve the payments at, uh, the, yeah, payments of the bills as they appear on the worksheet. We have a motion to approve that, please. We have a second? Right, any discussion? Same thing, roll call, please.
Hunter.
Yeah.
Nelson. Porter. Walden. Walden.
Yeah.
All right, which is what I'm sure everybody's here for, swearing in of the new official. All right, so how we're gonna do it, we're gonna swear in, uh, the mayor, and then we will swear in the alderman, and then we'll swear in the treasurer, and, uh, treasurer, and then the clerk. So, Bill, you can stand right on up here.
And I get the honor. Okay, so for everybody, I will say aye, and then I will be blank, and that's when you say your own name, okay? So I don't have to say aye, state your name. Like another word. Aye.
Aye.
We solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the Constitution of Illinois, and I will faithfully start the meeting. If you prefer to admit your, uh, best.
Congratulations. And if you can come around over here, all right? And then if I can have, uh, Mr. Bridge, uh, uh, with the Palmer, and then Porter, and Mr. Walden up here. Uh, these are all, if you think it's okay?
Again, if they say the word aye, I'll, like, space, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and I will faithfully discharge the duty of alderperson to the best of my ability. Uh, we'll, please, we'll sign the meeting after the meeting. I'll be here. Uh, Angel. Uh, what did I do?
Yeah, if you want to pick that one up.
So, we begin with aye.
Aye.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duty of alderperson to the best of my ability.
Okay, roll call.
Bradshaw. Nelson. Palmer.
Yeah.
Porter. Walden. Walden.
Here.
Point, and aye to consent. Lawthorn. So we're in the north of a regional council through the city of Columbia. At the, where we.
You guys take roll call first.
We did.
You gotta take roll call. Okay, no, roll call to advise and consent. You guys take a motion.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so do you need to move that the council approves of me as? Be in the back for that motion, or you can, anybody. I'll make a motion that Soren, or if you continue as our usual record and motion. That's it, I'll, that's. Major.
Hi.
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 He's headers. I solemnly swear, I solemnly swear that I will support, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and I will faithfully discharge the duty, and I will faithfully discharge the duty, uh, to the attorney, for the best, on the duty thing, to the best of my ability. I'll be coming. To my best will is. Not related to, uh, to hide them. Anybody, anybody have anything they want to put out since not on the, not related to, to, to hide? Uh, can you, can you take this round? I have nothing at the moment, since I've just got here. Three minutes, uh, I will go to the idiot attorney, and I have things that come up, I think, that I'm. And you have, for Andrew?
Yes, I do have a few things. Uh, first of all, the budget, um, there's good start before it can start looking on there. Um, we still need a meeting to go over budget, so we'll just, we might be able to show them. So I'm just gonna suggest that maybe we'll go to my patients to, 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 maybe some actually maybe think about, you don't have a budget yet in place, and think about maybe table it down, to, to, to leave after the budget, this step, and we'll be going over the budget and the accounting, and we'll be, uh, putting on it after next meeting. And then I also have some certificates, uh, uh, that's been matured now, and we just got them on Monday, so they're not on here to vote, so I don't know if you want us to go ahead and hold it over, or if you wanna wait until we get the budget set and see what we're apt to review the, uh, which difference, if it seems. I do have that hundred forty thousand dollar one on here, but the two hundred thousand dollars not on here, and either here's a sixteen thousand, or the twenty one thousand. But I don't want to give you a federal details, eleven minute after, uh, budget.
Can't act on these, uh, my thought was, is we roll over, put them all back, in this season's step, for the hundred forty thousand dollar one. And you may, that may be our, like, uh, new reality, we may have to, we may have to have that number to, to see where, but, but now having to cut.
Right.
Uh, we can talk about.
Which is something I could find out.
You know, you roll those other ones over. Do you have them all, if you want?
I believe so. Oh, I am, yeah. I, and I.
You wanna roll them all?
The hundred forty thousand dollar one, which is on here to vote anyway, because I'm not here, so. Those are the one, okay. Yeah, and you could say it from back, from back to for, um, yeah, that's a great. Not every. Other than that, that's why I have.
Hey, we'll go move on to all the person. I've actually got, I'm just the first time I've, uh, so being, so I actually have some, um, we're gonna start off, and Gary's key back up.
Oh.
You're not gonna get off this. So, as everybody knows, or anybody that doesn't know, Gary started off as an alderman of the city, and then took over as mayor. Decided not to run this year. Talk about that later. The city of assumption, all of the former councilmen, current councilmen, and all the employees want to thank you, that you, people don't know, people on the council know the hours you put in, and nobody else knows about, the ten o'clock at night home calls, the money that you have gotten us from the state over the years, everything that you've done, we wanted to say thank you, we did get you a going away. Crock, same, uh, city of assumption, if you have dates on it.
Yeah, like you.
We were gonna do a proclamation day, but you would have had to dumb the proclamation, thank you.
Yeah.
And we were like, that's really cool. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
It did hit me to like four o'clock at night. Very four. It'll be nice. Not gonna get the weird tech that's here at two thirty in the morning either. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for your service, we appreciate it. So, the second person, um, she's not here tonight, we wanted to make an official reading into the minutes, thanking Seluna Reed for her years of being an alderperson for the city. She has, uh, she was the senior alderperson, and I came on, and she helped me. So, we wanted to just read into the minutes of thanking her as well. Matt, Matt Stotter?
No, he's not.
Oh, yeah, okay. We also wanted to say thank you to Matt Hunter for filling in in between one of our meetings and the election. And it's also municipal clerk's recognition, we can state of Illinois, so we wanted to say thank you to Janet for all the work that she does for the city.
That's it. Okay, we'll move on to, oh.
Just table. Just table. Cause we even have to go over now, you know, I'd say that's, I mean, I do. I mean, obviously, it's on.
Hey, we have engineer Ron, David there?
Up there. Okay, um, so the, uh, I just briefly, free project, uh, the sewer project, we have invoice tonight to, uh, approve, and, uh, just going by the values, work complete, if the project's about eighty-eight percent, uh, we are having trouble getting some, uh, utilities relocated down at the southwest corner of town, so that could affect the completion date. The contractor still thinks they can get it done, so, um, we're not recommending any kind of an extension or anything, uh, but that could come up. There's a change order to approve, which has mostly to do with, um, uh, French backfill, which is a gradual backfill under paved areas to, uh, prevent, uh, settlements. And there's, there's some adds, some subtracts, and that change order is only gonna be within twenty-six dollars, uh, debt, additional cost. And then, uh, I was gonna point out the Petersburg plumbing dispersment under the sewer project, there was a transposition in that amount. It's listed as one seven three five four three one nine four, and, uh, it's actually one seven three four five three point nine four. So, uh, when you go to approve that, uh, take note of that. And then, uh, the next project's actually listed as motion to approve invoice for water treatment plant. Uh, it's actually the water main replacement project. It is, uh, Petersburg plumbing, not Perg. You go to approve that, try to, you guys. Uh, and that, that project, the water main portion is eighty-two percent, about the only thing allowed is finished grading, seeding, and, uh, pavement repairs. The, the actual water main is all complete. The lead service line, the lead service line project is, uh, seventy-two percent currently, and there's an invoice, uh, and a change order there, which that change order is for some additional quantity, um, of a couple things, but it's only thirty-seven hundred fifty-nine dollars, uh, additional cost. And there's also a change order for the water treatment plant project, which is E deck, uh, sixty-seven hundred and four dollars, thirty cents, which is for changing the different insulation on the walls, the foam insulation, and then changing the window materials from a wood window to a fiberglass window, which, um, everybody, uh, would agree that that's actually a better material to begin with, and it's cheaper than the windows and glass. We're requesting approval of that. That's all I have.
We will come move on to the motion to approve the invoice of sewer.
Petersburg replacement amount, one, one hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Uh, Petersburg plumbing dispersment. Over just being, fifteen thousand eight hundred and six dollars and seventy-eight cents, total. Hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-two cents.
Roll call.
Walden.
Does it mean?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Porter.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Bradshaw.
Okay, motion to approve the sewer chain, order nine, water main replacement, three hundred twenty-six dollars.
I make motion to approve the sewer chain order number nine for three hundred twenty-six dollars.
Roll call.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nelson. Walden. Bradshaw. Porter.
Yeah.
Palmer.
Motion to approve the invoice of water. Water treatment of Petersburg plumbing.
Please switch it to say water main.
What?
Okay, motion to approve invoice of the water main placement. And then Petersburg plumbing dispersment. Five thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Cass bean invoice, nine thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and forty-four cents, total fifteen thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars, forty cents.
I make a motion to approve the water main plant with Petersburg plumbing dispersment at five thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Cass bean invoice nine thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and forty-four cents, with a total of fifteen thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars and forty cents.
Roll call.
Porter.
Yeah.
Bradshaw.
Yeah.
Palmer.
Yeah.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Motion to approve the invoice of water lead service line. Petersburg plumbing dispersment. Twenty-four thousand one hundred and four dollars and seventy-nine cents. That's these invoice, eighteen hundred and two dollars and seventy-four cents, total twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the total amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy.
I'll say it. Me and roll call.
Bradshaw. Palmer.
Yeah.
Porter.
Yeah.
Nelson. Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve change of order for water lead service, three thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
I make motion to approve the water, the, approve the change order for the water life service of three thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
Okay, roll call.
Palmer.
Yeah.
Walden.
Yeah.
Sullivan. Porter.
Yeah.
Nelson. Bradshaw.
Okay, motion approved, change order one for water treatment plant. Minus six thousand seven hundred four dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, roll call.
Walden.
Yeah.
Porter.
Yeah.
Nelson. Bradshaw. Sullivan. Palmer.
Motion to approve zoning board recommendation variance request for Whiskers.
Yes.
Okay, so this was a zoning, uh, request, uh, variance, where the zoning board considered, uh, back in April, or, I'm sorry, yeah, April. And, uh, uh, the zoning board feels this divided, uh, recommendation denied that request. Uh, the, I think, zoning boards, uh, recommendations should be, uh, if you don't have that request, no. Um, the zoning board did hold a hearing, um, and did hear evidence and discuss it. Uh, it is up to this board then to either agree with that recognition or disagree with that recognition. Uh, you also have the right to, um, consider any, uh, conditions that you require, and you were going to recommend around the areas. Uh, the way the motion is for this board is to vote in favor of the motion, and the movement against the variance. Uh, and, uh, so vote, you're, you think, there it shouldn't rank, and you'll vote a no of the motion. A variance allows a use of a property that is contrary to what the overall zoning scheme calls for. In this case, the facility is located in a residential district, the kind of activities they're proposing, um, will fall within a commercial district. Um, so they're not zoning for what they're doing, and the variance, basically, their request for this board to waive those requirements, possibly with some conditions, so that they can operate the, uh, this particular business or, or activity, uh, to get rescued at that location. So, I, I hope that, it's clear to everybody that you have any questions.
We do have a couple speeches that we're allowed.
You have three, five, ten, each person. Let's do it now.
Okay. There you go, I understand. Okay, the girls that want to read first are from Lake Town Veterinary Clinic, um, Lake Town Animal Hospital, I'm sorry. And they are our partner veterinarian staff, and they were here with a letter of recommendation from Dr. Peterson himself that he wrote today.
Okay, so this is from Dr. Brett Peterson. So if you may make concern, my name is Brett Peterson, I'm a veterinarian and owner and medical director of Lake Town Animal Hospital in Springfield, Illinois. I am writing this letter to express my support for Haley and Whiskers Rescue. I worked with Haley for over a year at Lake Town before she left the practice to establish her rescue. She is compassionate, fine, very good at what she does, and passionate about helping animals. I fully supported her decision to start her own rescue, and I consulted her extensively during the planning and setup phases of Whiskers Rescue. Discussing health, safety, biosecurity, and the skillful what she was undertaking. She decided to establish a foster rescue to avoid the wellness and safety issues that can come with shelters that house animals. She wanted to help as many animals as she could without causing a strain on her face or dealing with overcrowding concerns. So she lined up several fosters to help limit the number of animals she would be sheltering in her facility at any given time. Haley has continued to consult with me frequently regarding the health and treatment of her animals. She contacts me or brings her animals to see me for any concerns beyond the skillful what she's comfortable with or allowed to do as a rescue. She knows she can contact me at any time for medical advice. She does not diagnose or treat any animals without my input, aside from basic husbandry or wound care. She is trained and has demonstrated competence in drawing blood, giving injections, which she is allowed to do with veterinary supervision. I believe Haley is providing an invaluable service to an understaffed, underserved area by providing basic care for animals that would otherwise be without any sort of medical intervention. Getting these animals off the street, providing medical care for them, and getting them into caring, supportive foster homes helps, helps feed animals, and it also helps the community by reducing the feral population and keeping personal pets safer by reducing the number of sick or diseased animals that are roaming freely, and dearly threatened using them.
Okay, I have one also, where I'm not sure if anybody else is. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Haley Monae, I'm the founder and executive director of Whiskers Rescue Rescue. I am a non-voting member of our board of directors, many of which sit in Springfield tonight, as well as other supporters of this rescue. We believe the zoning merit, merits approval, variation, sorry, merits approval and respect for the seeker's support in passing to approval tonight, we're offering a special use for it. We have engaged with the community to clarify that our foster home headquarters holds no disturbance and will have no negative impact on the neighborhood's safety or character. We are deeply passionate about our mission and, and the communities that we're, we are able to help and extend our love for animals and their owners. and extend our love for animals and their owners to Assumption Illinois, a very connected group of communities. Our rescue is regulated financially as a not-for-profit by several governing agencies on state and federal levels. Physically, we are regulated by the Department of Agriculture. They regulate us based on numbers, records, contracts, the environment, temperature, and much more. The Department of Agriculture possesses the expertise and legal knowledge necessary to carry out its responsibilities effectively and its judgment should be afforded appropriate trust and depth. We have passed two inspections since opening. Additional regulation at this stage may be perceived as exceeding the appropriate scope of governmental authority and risks undermining the balance between government and individual rights. One Simple Whiskers Foster operates a foster-based organization, meaning we do not maintain a central facility, but instead rely on a network of dedicated foster to provide care. Our rescue is equipped with strict biosecurity protocols designed to both prevent the introduction of infectious disease to our fields and to ensure containment should any illness occur. We follow strict protocols for the disposal of general waste, biohazardous materials, and threats associated with all health, brain, relevant health and safety regulations. Assumption is not an isolated defense system. Both domestic, domestic and wild animals have already contributed to the circulation of pathogens of statewide concern. Given this context, with strict biosecurity measures in place, our rescue operation do not present any further risk to animal or public health. It is the responsibility of pet owners to ensure their animals are protected through primal vaccinations and use of preventative to safeguard their health. Additionally, we are a resource for the things that the family and our community has fallen on hard times. We are in this together and are here to support Assumption and its residents. The scope of our concerns and responsibilities extends beyond Assumption Illinois, recognizing that there are many surrounding counties that need our organization. We encourage collaboration between us and the community and welcome anyone who is interested to join our efforts and to support our mission. We respectfully encourage the approval of this matter this evening, which technically will be voting out, um, allowing us to commit an assumption for its openness to a break in change and progress. This will enable us to begin planning community events and new boards with our dog days and summer plan, further engaging the community in meaningful ways. Thank you.
Can anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion?
I got a question that's pretty important. With the, the variance, uh, have you ran into, if you're with, um, the municipality, including the variance and they're not considering that they, they do run down the road, um, around. The variance is tight, specifically, if you're not really open to it, you can't even go in this year. Anybody else would have to probably, and to make their speech, do I, uh? Um, on the other hand, you know, if, you know, if you do start getting a lot of requests, the variance would, uh, you'd have to probably tighten up, you know, your, your, uh, criteria to approve it. Um, but others, is that answered question?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Can anybody else? Motion to approve. This is of recognition denied. I want this motion to get denied or a recognition. You want that? If anybody wants to make a motion, as stated on the agenda, if the motion is to approve the zoning board's recommendation, the zoning board's recommendation is denied, if the motion is denied.
Just remember, the zoning board followed the rules of, uh, you're supposed. You know, you have a city, same as a stop sign, and things that the office, uh, handles. But they voted, uh, I think you had, yes. You may not support the variance.
I wonder if we. Here, for, for the, basically, not for the one, most, uh, who are, it's not everyone.
Well, and, and hearing number is on, but I think if nobody is in a position of willing to make a motion, adopt or approve the recommendation, then it is on the, on the agenda, that they can, like, versus the. I disagree with the zoning board's recommendation and the brand of carrying, and that would be the reason. Denied, maybe, the recommendation, and the brand of carrying. And again, you know, it's not the only choice you have. When you say, you know, you can't handle it and you talk about, you make this time to talk about potential judicial or something like that.
Yes, if we not, that, that's on, like, if you're going to use the motion, and it stands as an initiative, um, for any one ordinance, that I keep having to run the initial.
It does, but you do have a request on the portion that needs to be acted on. So you could handle it this time and come back in a month, but it's still hanging out.
I think it's gone on long enough.
Well, I'm just seeing how many people on, on the front page, um, I, you know, I don't know if they've had time to be well informed on everything. Because I'm, I was, at the ordinance meeting, I went through all the minute work to the, the, um, zoning board meeting. So, I, there were excellent questions at, at that zoning board meeting. Um, I, excellent questions answered as well. So, um, I just wish people had heard more of that. I just don't know if they, if people have, the same.
I was on the zoning board.
Yes, 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 yes.
I was on the zoning board and I was at.
Oh, you were at the meeting. Okay, sorry. I, yeah, I'm sorry. We're both, you feel comfortable, okay.
We have somebody on. What is the, the big reason you will change the ordinance line?
Well, it's residential. They, she is able to have it in, um, if it's zoned, uh, C two. There are three different areas in the community that are zoned for that area. So, i- i- it's just because it's residential.
It's not so much of a business of that, it's maybe not appropriate for where it's at. I think it's what, and, and, I'm very dear as well, you can put it in, and it is a notice of.